Of Plan Amendments. Want to welcome all the Commissioners, hope they had a wonderful weekend this weekend. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to Jason.
Good morning Commissioners and everyone here is morning. I'm Jason Gaines with Cobb County Community Development. And this meeting is for our annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments. This meeting is a little bit different than what the Board of Commissioners usually does in terms of zoning and land use decisions. This basically goes through a series of reviews for items that were brought to the Board of Commissioners for rezoning in the past year. And, excuse me, and if a zoning decision goes against the future land use map, we bring it here to make a decision on how to adjust the future land use map. So we have three types of items that are part of this process. We have zoning decisions, which are basically what I just described. Then you have commission proposals, which are items that come forward as a result of discussions between staff and Commissioners. And then you have staff proposals, which are items that staff has identified typically involve some cleanup. It can be a map amendment. It could be amendments to a list like our redevelopment land inventory or our list of small area plans and studies and things of that nature. So we have our ZD's zoning decisions, CP's commission proposals, and SP's staff proposals. So with that, we have our zoning decisions, and we have 19 of them this year. However, I do want to note that prior to the planning commission hearing, ZD 19 was withdrawn before it was actually heard. So we won't be hearing that one here today. ZD 19 has been withdrawn. So with that, we will move on to ZD 1, which was based on zoning case Z 59 of 2015. It's located in Commission District 4. The request is to go from Neighborhood Activity Center to industrial compatible. We're located on the southwest side of Veterans Memorial Highway, east of Pebblebrook Road. And the recommendation from the Planning Commission on January 4th was to deny ZD 1. So with that, Chairman, you would ask if...
Right. Is there anyone from the floor that has to like to address this issue? Commissioner Cupid? Oh, you have one? I didn't see anybody. Oh, I'm sorry, please.
Okay. So, and I apologize, I probably should have clarified that ahead of time. So if someone has comment from the public, that item would get pulled to the side.
Right.
If the Commissioner in that district has something that she wants to discuss about that item, that one would be pulled to the side as well.
Right, exactly.
If there are no comments, then we move on forward to the next item in the ZD list.
Okay, so we'll be pulling that and we're discussing that individually with the other cases that meet the same criteria. Okay.
Okay. Next item is ZD 2, based on zoning case Z 82 of 2015, also located in Commission District 4. Request is to go from low-density residential to medium-density residential located on the north side of Church Road, east of Northern Circle at 167 Church Road. Planning Commission's recommendation was to deny.
Is anybody would like to just, from the audience, like to address that issue? That zoning decision? Commissioner Cupid? Okay, so we'll leave that on the consent agenda.
Next item is ZD 3, based on zoning case Z 85 of 2015, located in Commission District 4. The request is to go from Neighborhood Activity Center to industrial, located on the west side of Austell Road and south, and the south side of Pear Road at 3200 Austell Road. Planning Commission's recommendation was to deny.
Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address this issue? Commissioner Cupid? Okay, we'll leave that on the consent agenda.
Next item is ZD 4, based on zoning case Z 93 of 2015. The request is to go from low-density residential to Neighborhood Activity Center, also located in Commission District 4, located on the north side of Pat Mill Road, east of Dink Lane. Planning Commission's recommendation was to approve.
Is there anyone from the audience like to address this issue? Commissioner Cupid? Okay, we'll leave that on consent agenda.
ZD 5 was based on zoning case Z 94 of 2015, located in Commission District 1. Request was to go from very-low-density residential to Neighborhood Activity Center and very-low-density residential, located on the northwest corner of Macklin and Villa Rica Roads. Planning Commission's recommendation was to deny.
Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address this issue? And we'll pull that from the, for later discussion. Commissioner Weatherford, do you have a comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, next.
Okay, next item is ZD 6, based on zoning case Z 99 of 2015. We're located in Commission District 4. The request is to go from Neighborhood Activity Center to low-density residential, located on the southwest side of Bankstone Drive and the north side of Horseshoe Bend Road, addresses 2790 Bankstone Drive Southwest. Planning Commission's recommendation was to deny.
Is there anyone from the audience like to address this issue? Commissioner Cupid? And we'll leave this on the consent agenda.
ZD 7, based on zoning case Z 104 of 2015, located in Commission District 1. Request is to go from medium-density residential to high-density residential, located on the northeast corner of Santown and Osborne Roads and at the western terminus of Pear Street. Just a quick note, this item was located in Commission District 1 at the time. With the redrawn Commission District boundaries, this area is now in Commission District 3. And the Planning Commission's recommendation was to approve.
Is there any from the audience like to address this issue? Commissioner Burl?
Right, I'm good with it.
Okay, so we'll leave...
Yes.
Okay, good, alright, alright. So we'll leave that on the consent agenda.
Alright, ZD 8 is based on Z 80 of 2015. It's located in Commission District 4. The request is to go from Community Activity Center, medium-density residential, and Mableton Town Center to public institutional. This is located on the southwest side of Mableton Parkway, south of Veterans Memorial Highway, and on the north side of Glor Circle. Addresses are 5600 Glor Circle and 827 Wood Valley Road. Planning Commission's recommendation was to approve.
Is there anyone from the audience like to address this issue? Commissioner Cupid? And we'll leave that on consent agenda.
ZD 9 was based on Z 2 of 2016, located in Commission District 4. Request is to go from Community Activity Center to low-density residential, located on the east side of Reed Drive, north of Hurt Road. Planning Commission's recommendation was to deny.
Is there anyone from the audience like to address this issue? Commissioner Cupid? Okay, we'll leave this on the consent agenda.
ZD 10 is based on case Z 102 of 2015, located in Commission District 1. Request is to go from very-low-density residential to Community Activity Center, located on the northwest side of Morris Hill Road, northeast of Brookstone Drive, at address of 1979 Morris Hill Road. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address this issue? Commissioner Weatherford? Okay, we'll leave that on the consent agenda.
ZD 11 is based on case Z 23 of 2016, located in Commission District 1. Request is to go from rural residential to medium-density residential. We're located on the west side of Morris Hill Road, south of Morris Hill Church Road. Planning Commission recommends deletion of the request from MDR, medium-density residential, to LDR, low-density residential.
I'm sorry, this is rural residential.
Right, to go from rural residential to MDR. And the recommendation was to delete from MDR to LDR.
Is there anyone from the audience like to address this issue? And we'll pull that from the consent agenda. And do you have any comments?
No, sir, I'll wait.
Okay.
ZD 12 is based on Z 87 of 2015, located in Commission District 2. Request is to go from public institutional to Regional Activity Center with a subcategory of high-density residential. This is located on the west side of Spring Hill Parkway, the north side of Paces Ferry Road, the east side of Spring Hill Road, and the southwest side of Simpson Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone like to, from the audience, like to address this issue? Commissioner Otte?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would change the recommendation to public institutional to medium-density residential.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and pull that from the agenda.
I mean, I don't need any discussion if you want to just, I mean, you can leave it on consent if you want to make that change.
Oh, oh.
There was nobody in the audience who wanted to talk about it.
Right, we need a motion for that, don't we? Because we're changing, we're changing what the Planning Commission recommended to what the Board recommends. So we need, wouldn't we need a motion for that to make that change?
Counsel.
You don't need a separate motion. When you, when you do the approval of it, it would be as revised. So you would, you would say that the changes that Planning Commission recommended as revised.
As revised, okay. Well, in this case, the, but he's suggesting we make the change, so it's not the Planning Commission.
Yeah, but mine's a change to the Planning Commission recommendation.
Right, so what's on here right now is it's from public institution to RAC HDR.
Right.
You're recommending we go to medium-density.
Correct.
So when I make the motion, I'd say as revised by Chairman Otte or by the Board?
By Chairman, as revised by Chairman Otte, Commissioner Otte. Oh, God, well...
I'm leaving.
Could we? Do we have the ability to stop and then cut and go back 30 seconds?
Well, I think that needs to be on the record.
I guess the answer's no. I'll list on here Commissioner Otte, revised by Commissioner Otte. Okay.
Commissioner, if I may, I just want to clarify, we want to go to medium-density residential or RAC medium-density, the straight medium-density? Yes, sir.
Okay.
And if I may ask a question?
Absolutely, sure.
That was the Planning Commission's recommendation as well?
Yes, that's ZD 12, yes, and their recommendation was to approve it as it was presented, yes.
Not to the MDR?
No.
Okay.
It was to go to, it was to go to RAC HDR.
Right.
And Commissioner wants to amend that, so.
I got you.
As amended.
Okay, well, I'll make sure in my motion that I'll say that as revised by Commissioner Otte. I'll need some prompting here, if you'd help me with that.
I will, I do phradium slips like that.
Let's move on, get out of this hole.
Yes, sir. ZD 13 is based on case Z 6 of 2016, located in Commission District 2. Request is to go from low-density residential and medium-density residential to medium-density residential only, located on the north side of Lee Road, east of Atlanta Road, and the Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address this issue? Commissioner Otte?
And I would change it to deny. Just leave it as it is.
So as revised to deny.
Right. Okay. ZD 14 is based on case Z 14 of 2016, located in Commission District 4. The request is to go from Neighborhood Activity Center to industrial compatible. We're located on the north side of Veterans Memorial Highway, west of North Island Road. Planning Commission recommends denial.
Is there anyone like to discuss, from the audience, like to discuss this issue? Okay, we'll pull that from the consent agenda. Commissioner Cupid?
Case ZD 15 was based on zoning case Z 32 of 2016, located in Commission District 2. Request is to go from low-density residential and Community Activity Center to high-density residential, located on the east side of La Croix Drive, north of, and the north side of Robinson Road at 810 and 820 La Croix Drive. Planning Commission recommends deletion of the land parcel to medium-density residential with the road to remain in low-density residential.
Is there any from the audience like to address this issue? I see your hands, so we'll pull that from the agenda, Mr. Otte. Okay.
ZD 16 is based on case Z 45 of 2016, located in Commission District 4. The request is to go from Neighborhood Activity Center to medium-density residential and Neighborhood Activity Center, located on the north side of Veterans Memorial Highway, east of Davis Drive, and south of Spring Road at 1722 Veterans Memorial Highway. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there any from, anyone from the audience like to address this issue? Commissioner Cupid? Leave on the consent agenda?
ZD 17 is based on case Z 64 of 2016, located in Commission District 3. This one says the redrawing of the boundaries, district boundaries, has moved to Commission District 1, but it was in Commission District 3 at the time of the decision. The request is to go from Community Activity Center to high-density residential. We're at the west side of Shiloh Road, south of Bent Ridge Drive. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone from the audience like to address this issue? Commissioner Burl?
I'm good with it.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll leave it on the consent agenda.
And ZD 18, based on case Z 63 of 2016, located in Commission District 2. Request is low-density residential to medium-density residential, located on the east side of Johnson Ferry Road, north of Lake Real Court at 1668 Johnson Ferry Road. Planning Commission recommends denial.
Is there anyone from the audience like to address this issue? And I see your hands, so we'll pull that. Is there, Commissioner Otte?
Yeah, I mean, I support the denial. I don't know, is, is there anything else we need to talk about if it's denied? Doug?
No, I don't care.
So then you say you're okay if it stays on consent or if we deny?
I'll pull, I'll pull my request.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for working with us. So I'll leave that on the consent agenda? Now, that's ZD 18?
Yes, as denied.
As denied, right.
Okay, this is what, I'm just tallying everything up here briefly.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Commissioner Otte?
Yeah, I would like to pull ZD 9 from consent.
Alright, so we'll, we're going to pull ZD 9 from the consent agenda.
Alright, so we're going to pull ZD 9. Got it?
So this is what I have as, for, for the consent agenda. ZD 2, ZD 3, ZD 4, ZD 6, ZD 7, ZD 8, ZD 10. ZD 11 to MDR is revised by Commissioner Otte.
Yes, 11 is pulled, sir.
11's pulled, correct. This is ZD 12.
That was 12, that was 12, sorry.
12, as revised by Commissioner Otte to MDR. ZD 13 is revised by Commissioner Otte to deny. ZD 16, ZD 17, and ZD 18. And ZD 19 was withdrawn.
Yes, sir.
So we pulled, we pulled ZD 15 from the agenda, didn't we? Yes. Okay. So I'll read it again. ZD 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 10, 12 as revised, 13 as revised, 16, and 17 and 18. Are there concurrence of those?
Leave it 18 as revised.
Well, now, do we have to read, I thought you drew ZD 18 from the, or ZD 19?
ZD 18, ZD 18 was taken, was put back on consent.
It's on the consent, right.
It was put back on consent.
But I don't have to read ZD 19 because we drew it, right?
No, because ZD 19 was withdrawn, yes, sir.
Okay, so, again, so ZD 18 is on the consent agenda. To deny, correct. So that, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda as, as expressed by me.
One second.
Yes, Dana.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, a quick clarification for the sake of the minutes. Is this in compliance with the Planning Commission recommendations or as depicted in the book? As far as the motion for approving the consent?
As revised, as revised as I stated, by Commissioner Otte for ZD 12 to MDR and ZD 13 to deny.
I have a question.
Sure.
The book that we have, the revised book that we have reflects Planning Commission recommendations.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so referring to the book, then?
Correct.
My presumption should be per Planning Commission, okay.
Yes.
So the question, excuse me, the question then is, do we, when we put it on the consent agenda, is it is recommended by staff or recommended by peace?
As recommended by the Planning Commission and then the two items that were amended by Commissioner Otte.
So, everybody clear on that? I had a second, do I hear any discussion? Let's vote, please. And it passes 5-0.
So with that, we would now review each of the pulled items individually. You conduct a public hearing and then take comment from the Commissioners and then move forward.
No problem, I understand. Thank you. Commissioner Cupid? Who, I'm sorry, Robin, good morning. Yes, please. I had my sequence off here a little bit.
Thank you very much. My name is Robin Meyer with the Mableton Improvement Coalition, and I'd like to speak in favor of your adoption of the Planning Commission recommendation for this, for this parcel. The zoning decision was made in, as an exception to the trends in the area to accommodate an existing business that wished to expand, but the trend in the area is very much towards more consumer-oriented neighborhood supportive uses. Sometime back, the future land use map was changed from this industrial emphasis to a neighborhood type uses, and that trend should not be deflected by this one zoning case, which was an exception to the rule. If you, if this amendment were to have been adopted, or were adopted, it would create an island of industrial-compatible use in a two-mile segment along Veterans Memorial, which is, which is completely on the future land use map, NRC and MDR. So we would urge you to follow the Planning Commission recommendation and deny this proposed change. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further? People from the audience who like to address this issue? In that case, I'll pass the helm to Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, I'm supportive of the Planning Commission's recommendation to keep this as a neck, as was shared by Ms. Meyer. There was intent to change the future land use map in years prior to reduce the intensity along Veterans Memorial, and with that, would like to be consistent with that and support Planning Commission's recommendation to keep the future land use as Neighborhood Activity Center.
Is there any other discussion from the Board? In that case, I'd like to take the motion to a vote. First of all, Commissioner Cupid, do you like to move?
Yes. I move that we keep the future land use map of the parcel at issue in ZD 1 to Neighborhood Activity Center.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? The vote? And the motion carries 5 to nothing. Okay, we're going now to ZD 5. And someone from the audience like to address this issue? Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning, my name is Kelly Gamble. We agree with the Planning Commissioners' recommendation of denial. So if, you know, the Board's going to uphold that, I won't talk. But this rezoning application was supported by the community and approved in November of 2015. In the letter of stipulations, it specifically states that the specified owner intends to utilize the existing residential dwelling, which reflects the aesthetically pleasing residential architecture. His plans are to engage in some interior rehabbing and retrofitting to accommodate the insurance office. Furthermore, the stipulation letter states that because of the fact that the house on the property will be utilized and not demolished because of the utilization of pervious pavers instead of impervious asphalt and concrete, and because of the fact that the owner will be disturbing less than 5,000 square feet of the property, there will be no requirements by stormwater management to install detention on the subject property. The letter of stipulations that were approved prohibited all permitted uses within the LRO district, except for the insurance agency, and additional stipulations to ensure the exterior of the home remained residential in nature. The character of the area has not changed based on the zoning decision and stipulations the applicant agreed to. Much discussion was also had to as why the LRO zoning instead of a SLUP. The reason that the applicant had to apply for the LRO was because the language in the SLUP did not allow for the end use. Changing the land use designation should not be taken so lightly, given the extensive restrictions the land owner chose to place upon the end use. Therefore, we request you uphold the Planning Commissioners' recommendation and deny ZD 5. And then on a separate issue from ZD 5, several years ago, the county had considered adding language to the special land use permit section of the code to allow this type of end use. We would encourage the county to look at that once again to encourage small businesses like these that would not intrude on residential character of the area, yet not be detrimental in a land use plan change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience like to speak to this issue? Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I agree with Planning Commission's to deny that, as Ms. Gamble stated, there were extensive restrictions put on this piece of property when we zoned it, and it does need to stay the character of that area. So I would like to make a motion to deny ZD 5.
I have a second, any further discussion? Vote? And the motion carries 5 to nothing. Oh, if you would, if you would get with Dana about that SLUP issue, I'd appreciate it, Kelly, alright? As a new guy in town, I'd like to carry for, you know, go, carry through on that issue if you would. Thank you. Alright, the next on board is ZD 9. Am I correct? Yes, ZD 9. Anyone in the audience like to address this issue? And Commissioner Cupid?
I pulled this item, I was originally supportive of Planning Commission's recommendation, but I just have some concern looking at this map again, of having a CAC right next to LDR. Last year, when I dealt with some zoning that had industrial-compatible property next to residential, we took some time to create a tax amendment so that we would encourage a buffer upon development. I'd like to do something similar here, just in respect of the different intensities. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a part of what we do here today, but I did want to bring that to staff's attention at this hearing.
Any other Commissioner elect to address this issue? So, do I have a motion to accept the Planning Commission's?
With that, I move to support Planning Commission's recommendation. With that, I move to support Planning Commission's recommendation to keep the underlying future land use map as a community activity center with direction to staff to assess the CAC along Ossil Road, where it is next to residential to see if a text amendment can be drafted to add a buffer to protect the residential property.
Any further discussion? Let's vote on the motion.
Is there a second? Oh, I can hear it, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, she has, wait a second, I thought you seconded it. Yes. I asked for any discussion, there wasn't any, so I said, let's vote.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I apologize, take the board down.
Once the text amendment is drafted, will it have to come back to us, or?
Well, with what Commissioner Cupid referred to from last year, we actually held those items and we brought them back a few months later to read into text amendment and adopt. I think what, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what she wanted to do here was to actually go forward with the Planning Commission's recommendation, but then have us come back next year with a text amendment referring to the same area.
Correct.
Okay, let's try again. And the motion carries five to nothing. All right, now ZD eleven. Is there anyone from the audience like to address this issue? And Commissioner Weatherford?
I believe we have a speaker again.
Cal?
She was taking a nap. Only just a step longer.
It's good to see the deep friendship between, between the board and its citizens. I'm just moved by this deeply.
Yes, thank you, we appreciate it. Good morning, my name is Kelly Gamble, and I'm with People Looking After Neighborhoods. ZD eleven, the intent of the proposed amendment is to establish a more compatible future land use designation that corresponds to the approved senior residential development and is suitable to the future character of the area. However, this RSL was approved as a spot zoning, as the parcel in question is surrounded by single family homes and several large vacant parcels, which are all zoned either R20 or R30, and have a future land use of rural residential and very low density residential. The code does not allow RSL in these land use designations. On page three of your 2017 Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map Amendment booklet, future land use is defined as, quote, "A recommendation for future use of the property per the Cobb County Land Use Plan." Part of the comprehensive plan, future land use is a projection, not a zoning classification. Cobb County Code, Section 134 203, Residential Senior Living, One, the purpose and intent, the last sentence of this paragraph states, quote, "These uses shall not be established as a precedent for any other residential or non-residential district. Therefore, if the RSO code specifically states that it will not set precedent for a residential district, a land use plan change should not be necessary. Therefore, we request the existing land use designation of rural residential remain unchanged, so that this zoning decision does not set a trend which results in a redirection for this entire area, since future land use is a projection, not a zoning classification, per your definition." Thank you.
Kelly, could you just sort of stay right there for a second? Thanks. Commissioner Weatherford?
Certainly. I'd like to ask Mr. Gaines a question.
Yes, sir.
This particular change, if I look at this map, the rural residential is further to the north, I would assume, where rural residential. Everything else is VLDR in this area, RE zones.
Yes, sir.
I can't, or am I missing something?
Can we, can we pan out a little bit?
I'm trying to. Okay, the RE developed is RR, is what we're saying.
Right, rural residential is developed, is developed.
It's already developed, so the majority of the RR is already developed. And this is at the major intersection of basically Mars Hill and 41, which is, I believe the next one up is a church, Mars Hill Presbyterian Church further up, and then as you go in, there's already developed. The only, is there any undeveloped area here, I guess, is what I'm trying to see. Seems to me it's already developed, no matter what the future land use map shows, unless I'm missing something.
Well, that RR piece to the northwest of our current view doesn't appear to be developed, per se. There may be structures on it, but it doesn't look to be developed, it looks to be mostly woods.
It's R30 that's shown?
What I'm talking about.
I'm sorry. Kelly, what we're talking about?
Was that PRC or RR, because I see?
That's PRC.
Okay, that's PRC.
Correct.
Okay. And I'm hearing that's, that PRC piece is actually on Core Engineer's property, so.
I don't do well with colors, I have to look at labels, so that's what I'm trying to, if you say green, I'm not, I'm having a little trouble with that. So this is, PRC is really RR.
Well, it's Core Engineer's property, it's core property, so it can't be developed, it's undeveloped.
Right, so it's, it's core property. So the bottom left of the screen is also core property, is it not?
Right down the very left hand corner of the property.
I don't know if it follows the creek.
That very, that, where the cursor is currently, that's core property as well.
Right, it's all, follows the creek bed there. So I guess I don't understand the significance, and I mean, you can help me, Ms. Gamble, but everything that you're trying to protect is already developed, that I could see. And so I don't know if it matters one way or the other, I'm not sure what staff's recommendation is. But I do know this is a major intersection, and there's RSL in the city, and there's also RSL over here on Rosa Arbor that's in the county, right off Mars Hill Church, so. What is the issue one way or the other, I guess?
We have, we have a couple more questions from the board here first, Jason.
Actually, I was going to quote Jason from the Planning Commissioner, but I took that part out of my speech. Because Mr. Gunther called Jason up and pretty much asked him, you know, if, if code specifically states, you know, the density, the number, which was three point something in this case, doesn't derive it to go to medium density residential, which was the original recommendation by the board, there was no need to make the change. And I believe I paraphrased you correctly. So if, if, if senior living, residential senior living can go anywhere and does not impact the area developed around it, why do we need to change this from RR? You're right, the area is developed, so why change it?
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just trying to understand it.
Right, because if you do change it, then it opens the door for other developments to come in and make the area more intense. And so, again, this area is developed, this was kind of an infill piece to kind of finish out the area. So why change it if the area is now quote unquote "complete," unless you want to change the character of the area completely?
But the reverse argument can be made, why not change it?
Commissioner Ott?
Let me, let me answer both your questions.
Thank you.
First off, if you look just north of this piece on Mars Hill Road, okay, that's not developed. And then if you look across the street, the R30, that's not developed. Because there is no text amendment in the code or the comp plan about Mars Hill Road being a dividing line, then putting an MDR here in this spot would then suggest to someone that they could come in and look for zoning on the part just north of this on Mars Hill to a higher intensity than RR would allow. And then on the R30, it would also do the same thing, because both the R30 and the RR above it are a lower density based on the land use designation. And so it does, even though everything west of this is developed, you have two tracks, which are right at the intersection of a, of Mars Hill Road, and I don't know what that other road is, but it's a smaller road. Okay, so that's the first thing. The second thing is, it may not matter here, but it matters in the rest of the county. Because as Kelly's pointing out, with the code saying that RSL, and the board was real careful when, when the RSL is put in place, that it does not set a precedent. Okay, so if it does not set a precedent, regardless of the density that's inside the RSL, it should have no impact on the land use map. If this is allowed to happen here, you're now setting a precedent that anywhere else you put RSL throughout the county, you're going to do the same thing. It may not have an impact here, but it could easily have an impact somewhere else where there is not developed land around it.
Well, that particular part I agree with, the other part, both of those properties you mentioned are developed, there are homes there.
Well, the R30 is, but I mean, the more important thing, I think, regardless of whether it's developed on here, is, is the precedent that you would now set, saying that you need to make a land use map change with an RSL when it specifically says in the code that it has no precedent. And it would, it would impact some of the other places we put RSLs.
Commissioner Burrow?
Jason, is all the RR, is all the light green to the left of the RSL, all that RR now?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
And where this R30 on the other side of Macklin, R30 and R20?
It's VLDR.
Is all VLDR? Or is that R30?
R30 is your zoning and VLDR is your future land use.
But that's all, okay. So the Planning Commission is recommending that ZD eleven be LDR? That's what?
That is, that was the, they recommended deletion, yes.
To LDR?
Correct.
But what you're, what Kelly's saying is to leave it RR, okay.
Oh, you know, and I agree with what Commissioner Ott is saying about, you know, impacting other parts of county, but there's nothing RR in this area. I mean, it's very high, it's built out, so.
Well.
I'm talking about, that's core land, and all the property that is definitely RR is already built out, is R20 or R30.
And I, I accept that, I accept that, that argument. But I, but I also get the point that in this case here, the precedent is a greater concern to me. The reality is, I don't know why we, why the Board, Planning Commission even considered stirring the pot by asking us to be switched from RR to LDR.
Or MDR, or LDR, yeah, LDR.
I mean, that was bad enough, but making a switch at all is creating an issue here, there should have been no issue, because as you've pointed out very clearly, everything over there is already RR and developed. So just, just leave it alone. Why, why change it? Makes no sense to me. That's.
I don't disagree, I'm just pointing out the obvious in that it's already all developed and we're arguing over really nothing.
Well, my, my contention would be that instead of denying it, it should be withdrawn, because if we vote on it at all, then now we've told staff that if you do an RSL, you got to bring it in. And if we all agree that we shouldn't be bringing it in, then we shouldn't hear it.
Okay, so we're hearing a motion of that effect?
Yeah, well, it's his thing.
I'd like to see what staff thinks.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Cupid.
Question for clarification is that. The basis for, if I may be directed to Commissioner Ott's comment, Commissioner Ott as well as you, Jason. The basis for that comment is because the density can vary significantly in RSL.
Up to five units per acre. What would staff recommend, sir, hearing all the comments? You have to say something about that.
So you decided, you decided to punt, he punted.
Mr. Gaines will get used to lip reading soon, just kidding, Mr. Gaines. I, I do think that their, Commissioner Ott's point is well taken in that RSL is not supposed to be setting precedent as it relates to density calculations in areas. So staff would recommend withdrawal of the case.
That was a question, withdrawal or deny, withdrawal is better? Thank you, I make a motion to withdraw, ZD eleven.
Any further discussion? Vote on the motion. Motion carries to five to nothing to withdraw. Okay, our next, ZD fourteen, there you go. And is there anyone from the audience like to discuss this issue, ZD fourteen? Hey, Robin, welcome back.
Thank you, my name is Robin Meyer with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. ZD fourteen is quite close to ZD one, it's in that same stretch of Veterans Memorial, that same two mile stretch, which is predominantly MDR and NRC, I'm sorry, and NAC. And so we have essentially the same argument, that the trend in this area has been for less dense, lower, lower intensity, more consumer oriented kinds of uses. The prop, in this particular case, this was again a situation of an existing property, a very large warehouse, which had been zoned OS. While the original application was for LI, the eventual zoning decision was again OS with stipulations that met the needs of the community and softened, if you would, the use of this property on the surrounding neighborhoods. So again, the, if this, if this amendment were to be adopted, it would chain, it would create an island of IC in this NAC and MDR area. So we would ask you to uphold the Planning Commission recommendation and deny this applica, this proposed change to the future land use map.
Hey, thank you. Is there any other, any other further discussion from the audience on this issue? In that case, Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I move to support Planning Commission's recommendation to deny ZD fourteen as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hear the motion? And the motion carries five to nothing. Okay, ZD fifteen. Yes, good morning, Jill, please.
I didn't want to be late to the podium. Good morning, Commissioners and Mr. Chairman, my name is Jill Flem, I'm with East Cobb Civic Association. This piece of property is transitional in nature as it sits between a CAC and single family LRO. Concessions were made by the developer concerning buffering against the R20 zoning and a reduction in density in order to lessen the effect of this development. While a text amendment, though I'm not sure that is still in play, added to this property is good, we recommend that additional protection be given to preserve the single family, low density residential nature of Robinson Road. We recommend that this entire tract of land be designated low density residential, so as not to set a precedent for future development in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience like to discuss this issue? Okay, so I think, Commissioner Ott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, some, just some thoughts about this property, because I know the chairman wasn't here before. This property has come in numerous times or been attempted to develop, and it was kind of somewhat derelict. So this zoning was approved with the idea that it would not be any precedent setting to allow any further development on Robinson Road, particularly the north side. This is a large tract of land, as you can see. So what I would like to do is take the entire parcel, and that would be changing the top CAC part to RR, LDR, Low Density Residential, and amend the text amendment, which is on page fifty-three of your books. Change it to Low Density Residential. And right now it reads, "In order to protect the low density residential character of the area along the north and south side of Robinson Road from La Croix Drive eastward to Hold, the Board of Commissioners discourages more intense commercial and or residential uses along Robinson Road, and will only consider residential developments consistent with single family detached residential character of the area within the low density residential land use designation." So basically what we're saying is that any development along Robinson Road going east will stay under LDR. That would be my motion.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Vote on the motion. The motion carries five to nothing. All right, I believe that's the last one on the zoning decisions, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. So I'll, I'll yield the floor back to. So I'll, I'll yield the floor back to Jason on the Commissioner proposed amendments.
All right, again, the commission proposals are items that arise from discussion between staff and the individual commissioners. We have four items this year, we have one in Commission District One. One that was in Commission District Three, even though the subject property is now in Commission District One with the redrawn Commission District boundaries. And then we have two items in Commission District Four. So with that, we'll begin with CP-11. It's, the, the recommendation is to go, or the proposal, excuse me, is to go from Neighborhood Activity Center to Neighborhood Activity Center with a text amendment located on the south side of Dallas Highway, west of Lost Mountain Road. The planning commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone from the audience like to discuss this issue? Commissioner Burrow and Weatherford?
No, this is mine, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, planning staff and, uh, sat down and discussed where we could look at different uses and where was possible incompatible future land use. And this is one we identified, this particular intersection, Lost Mountain and Dallas Highway, has commercial on three corners, actually four corners if you count the paint store there. And so with some recent, uh, we approved a RSL just south of here. Felt it would be applicable to make this particular area a Neighborhood Activity Center, so they would have access to shopping and smaller retail such as cleaners and things of that nature. So I totally support this one, sir, and make a motion to approve it.
Any further discussion? Vote on the motion, motion carries five to nothing.
Next item is CP-31, again, this one has moved from Commission District Three to Commission District One. The proposed changes from industrial compatible and community activity center to high density residential located on the southeast side of Shiloh Road, east of Royal Drive. The planning commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone from the audience like to address this issue? Uh, Commissioner Burrow.
Excuse me, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote on the motion? Motion carries five to nothing.
Next item is CP-41. The proposal is from low density residential to Neighborhood Activity Center, located on the north side of Pat Mill Road, south of the city lim, uh, city boundaries of Smyrna. Planning commission's recommendation was for approval with a revision to the included text amendment.
Is there any from the audience like to discuss this issue? Commissioner Cupid?
Second.
Any further discussion? Vote on the motion? Motion carries five to nothing.
Okay. CP-42. The proposal is from low density residential and Neighborhood Activity Center to medium dens, medium density residential and Neighborhood Activity Center with a text amendment, located in the commercial node centered at the intersection of Floyd and Nigga Jack Roads. Specifically, this is more located, uh, more proximate to the intersection of Floyd Road and White Boulevard. The planning commission recommended approval of the request with one slight revision, which was to delete the proposed text amendment in light of a mapping error that was discovered prior to the planning commission hearing.
Is there any from the audience like to discuss this issue? Uh, please, Ms. Meyer, again.
My name is Robin Meyer with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. My purpose in addressing you really results from the confusion that existed at the planning commission hearing as to the exact piece of property that was under consid, consideration here. As the, as the map is shown here today, and I believe online, we are fully supportive of, of the planning commission recommendation, including the removal of the text amendment, although should you decide to keep the text amendment, that would be fine with us too. The planning commission recommended, in the end, I believe, the removal of the text amendment in an effort to clarify that the only property remaining in this, in this quadrant, in, in the NAC category, was that area which is currently, has the cursor hovering over it. Okay, I'm confused again by what I see on the screen. Okay, so that's not what I saw online, um, when I looked at this. Jason, can you help us out? What exactly is going to be MDR and what exactly is going to be NAC? And I'm sure this is going to take more than three minutes.
I was on the right side of the road, you're on the left side of the road, so.
Right, it's not, right. Okay, we've got our revised map here up on the screen, so.
Okay, there we go.
This is the parcel that's primarily in question.
Okay, so what is on, the, we are fully in support of what is now on the screen as, um, proposed change to MDR. Some of that subs, some of that previously was NAC on White Boulevard, and that, that would have provided quite an intrusion of commercially developable property into the neighborhood. At the planning commission hearing, there was a great deal of confusion about the text amendment, because the text amendment apparently had been proposed when, when additional property was going to be considered as a growth of the NAC. But so long as the NAC remains the size it is, and, and this amendment is adopted as the planning commission recommended it, then we're fine with or without the text amendment. Thank you.
Okay, congratulations. Now, um, anyone else from the audience like to address this issue? Uh, uh, no, I'm confused. All right, on the top map, it has where the NAC is.
Yes.
Okay, on the bottom map, blue out, the, the area outlined in blue is going to be the new MDR with, with text amendment, right? And, and NAC also.
The area outlined in blue is what was the, the final action in the associated zoning, well, there was an associated rezoning case with this, but not in the sense of a zoning decision where we're changing the future land use on parcels that were part of the rezoning. The reason I pointed to this parcel here is because it was included in the original, the original petition for that case, which I believe was Z-58. But it was not a part of what was approved. And the text amendment was requested by Commissioner Cupid in light of that parcel being shown in association with the zoning petition, but it was removed, w, once we went back and, and confirmed that the minutes removed that particular parcel from the zoning decision.
Okay, so Commissioner Cupid, are you, do you understand all this?
I'm trying to follow my understanding of what's being presented and not follow what I'm hearing too closely lest I become confused. Just a little bit of background about the, about these parcels is that in prior years, there was a text amendment to reduce the intensity of this area as it was transitioning from commercial to residential. However, um, the board passed as, or approved a zoning decision that made the edge of this NAC very intense next to residential. So part of this, um, proposal is to step down that residential, so you don't have that commercial right next to a LDR. So we increase the, um, density of the residential to MDR. And the text amendment that's associated with the, um, NAC property or the commercial property is just to ensure that whoever develops theirs, as it develops, that they're mindful of putting in a buffer because they are right next to residential. So it, it honors the intent and the language of the prior, of our current comp plan to, to ensure that there is mitigation of intensity, I guess, as you go across the corridor. And, but, um, it just facilitates to, it facilitates where this property is now. So my desire is to, or I move to support the planning commission recommendation, however, with keeping the text amendment, which, um, and, um, this is additional verbiage outside of my motion, I think it, or just reflects where the desire of, um, of the community is to make sure that there is, um, less intensity next to residential.
So what I hear is to accept the planning commission recommendation but retain the text amendment?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a second? Okay, if any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Rot?
If I could just make a suggestion or a question. I, I understand why you put the medium density residential on the back half of the NAC. And there is a parcel line, which I'm assuming is why the medium density residential goes all the way up and then makes the, the left hand turn and then the curve up, um, whatever that road is. But I think because it looks like the LDR next to it is undeveloped, I think you might want to expand on the text amendment. Because what's going to happen is if you make this MDR, which I, like I said, you had to do it on the little square down by the blue lines. But you now have this big, long exposure of MDR up against LDR, which would be very easy for the property owner to come in and increase the intensity on that LDR, saying, well, you have MDR right next to it. So what I'm saying is, you talked about a buffer between the, the NAC. What I would say is that, you know, if you intend for that vertical line there to be the, the dividing line between, um, medium density residential transitioning to low density residential, you should put it in the text amendment. Does that make sense? Because that's a, it's a big part of MDR.
Yes, I, I hear what you're saying, and I know there's some concern for the LDR, it's, it's I'm concerned about varying more, I'm curious to know, and, and it's not reflected here, but what the expanded future land use map is to the west, thank you.
Yeah, you see, you have that big undeveloped tract there, that R-20, which could very easily, because Gore Road is not a big road, I could easily see someone coming in and saying, oh, well, we've got MDR here, I'm gonna roll the dice and come in for a density that's, uh, above LDR.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
So what I'm saying is just, and you're, since you're doing a text amendment about buffering and all that, just say that, that the board of commissioners and the planning commission should consider the western boundary of this as a dividing line between medium density, low density, and that the board contemplates a low density residential development on that tract.
Okay, I'm comfortable with advising the motion to add that text. I know we've had a lot of consideration for development along Gore Road, I can't necessarily say that there's a commitment to LDR, but it doesn't hurt to have that text in there and for us to cross that bridge when we get to it.
So for clarification, you'd like to add that text to the text amendment, the text amendment that you proposed?
Yes, let's add that text amendment considering that there is so much LDR that surrounds the western side of that development.
So I'm guessing, since you proposed it and you talked about it, we have a first and a second, and do we have further discussion for the board members?
Does it need to be a new motion on that revise, on that revision? You don't get to say it, okay, okay.
So put the motion for a vote? Carries five to nothing. And we have those staff proposals, right?
Yes, sir. Final group of items is the staff proposals. Again, these are items identified by staff that involve things such as map cleanup or update of lists such as the undeveloped land inventory or the list of small area master plans and studies. This year, we have two staff proposals. We'll start with SP-1. It's located in Commission District One, uh, and the description is the inclusion of the entire parcel that was developed as a grocery store in the Neighborhood Activity Center, future land use category. We are located generally, uh, in the area of the intersection of Macklin and Lost Mountain Roads. And the planning commission's recommendation was for approval.
Is there any from the audience like to address this issue? Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I appreciate staff doing this, uh, in the last two years, we've been going through all of our, uh, areas in West Cobb, trying to correct issues like this, and this one has been a grocery store for, what, 10 years?
At least 10 years.
At least 10 years or more, so this is housekeeping, I fully support, make a motion to support SP-1.
Any discussion from the board? Carry to a vote? And motion carries five to nothing.
Okay, our final item is SP-2. It involves update of the redevelopment land inventory, primarily consisting of the addition and removal of sites from the inventory listing. The proposed items are recommended for removal. They are 2347 Canton Road, 2410 Canton Road, 2755 Canton Road, 3101 Cobb Parkway, 2900 Delk Road, and 185 Veterans Memorial Highway. Those items are proposed for removal from the list. Proposed for addition to the list is 3012 Canton Road. The planning commission recommends approval of the request, or of the action.
Is there any from the audience like to discuss this issue? Uh, Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, um, I would like to leave 2410 Canton Road on the redevelopment list. It was occupied when we were bringing this forward, and, um, now it's vacant again, so it needs to stay on at this time. And, um, I'm good with adding 3012, which is a closed business now, and, um, removing 2347, which is the old gas station that racetrack just, um, redeveloped, and 2755 Canton Road is the old lock casinos now occupied as well. So we're removing two and leaving one on and adding one.
Uh, do any of the commissioners have any additions or changes? Commission, so I'd like to, do I hear a motion to accept as revised?
So move, second.
Any further discussion? Motion for a vote? And it passes five to nothing. Sorry? Look, Chairman.
Yeah, really.
Can I get on him again now?
Yes, yes, you can.
Thank you. See, see what I mean? You'll learn.
With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I call this meeting over. Thank you very much for all that you attended, and the commissioners.